Great. All right, folks, it being seven o'clock, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Lawford, Supervisor Breslin.
Excused if not online.
Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen is excused. Supervisor Shackleton. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Wilsie. Supervisor Tom Quinn. Supervisor Jetson. Supervisor Bhushan. Supervisor Kneer.
Excused.
Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Welsh.
Excused because of COVID?
Oh, excused as well.
Supervisor Lyon. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Story. Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Don't know.
Okay, Supervisor Burnt. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Gordon Wolf. Supervisor Hartung. Chairman Cola.
Here. Next up, approval of the minutes. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bhushan moves. Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? Right, seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and other communications. We have a retirement, Mark Sand at the Highway after 27 years of service. Thank you very much. We have had a lot of experience go out of the door over the last eight or 10 years. That takes us to public comments for items on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak to items on the agenda? I don't think we have any signed up, so. All right. Comments are closed. Appointments. You've got the list in front of you. I would need a motion in a second for the board confirmation ones. Supervisor Headland moves. Supervisor Burnt seconds. Speaking to Supervisor Morehouse, you had. You're. Hang on.
I assume on the Dunn County Economic Development Corporation Board that that is Steve Lindberg.
It's the Spanish pronunciation and spelling. It's Steve, Steve Lindberg.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
Okay, we will note the typo for correction. Any others speaking to the appointments? All right, seeing none, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Report of the county manager. Dan. Take it away.
All right, first item on there is the purchase over orders over $40,000. All of those items are our bond payments for the last, the last month. I believe they're quarterly that we pay them. Some of them are half, some of them are semiannually, some are quarterly. But that's what those are. Any questions? If no, we can get into the fun part. The presentation of the 2026 budget. So we've been talking a lot in committees and in other places around the 2026 budget, and I, I feel like I've, I've been presenting a lot of the bad side of the, of the budget. So this presentation, as much as we're going to go over some of the items on there, really want to focus on, on really what is a, I would say, and I think our auditors have is a really good financial position of where we are. We need to make sure that we have the, the future in sight, but we're, we're in a good spot. So along that line, you all have a book in front of you. So we had a version of a budget book last year. This is the first kind of real budget book. So this does represent the 2026 budget that has been approved by the executive committee and goes out to public notice. In the future, the intent is that that budget book will be our public notice as it does include all of the statutory requirements that we have to put out there. But we also add some additional information that, in my opinion, is actually valuable. A lot of the things in the statute, as much as they're out there, it, it doesn't, to me, provide as much value in, in understanding the budget and, and the where the companies or where the county sits. So obviously, it says draft on the front there because it's got to get approved. But we wanted to get that out, and you get to take that home and think about it before you vote in on November 12th. So if you have any questions, or I'm sure there's no typos in there, but if you do identify anything, please, please, please let us know. I do need to give credit to Krista, Van, and Bieta, and Sophia, and Jenna, spending countless hours putting together this, this information in a way that we hope is, is helpful. So. All right, the proposed 2026 budget. So start off, this is a calendar. You've probably seen this. This is actually one of the pages within the book. So you'll see some screenshots from the book in this, in this presentation. So we are moving right along. We are right here on the 15th. So tomorrow, this will go out to the newspapers, and then we will vote on it on November 12th. So some of the things that we took into account, so you've seen this all, presented this a little bit in the past, as we look at putting together this budget, we looked at our compensation structure, our health insurance, premium funding. From the CIP standpoint, we had the Judicial Center HVAC, we had some squad car replacements, and then some work around parking lot sealing and maintaining our parking lots within the county, and actually got a little bit ahead of ourselves, and we were able to take care of some of those in this year as well. So in addition to that, and that's on the agenda for later today, some changes in our fund balance policy to allow us to better budget for some of the anomalies that happen, those bad years, and to prepare for future expenses as we know our buildings age over time, and there is work that needs to be done to them after they hit a certain time. So speaking specifically, the neighbors are starting to get to the age where some of the things that were put in as that the buildings were built are, are getting to the point where they need to be replaced. And then we made some changes with our administrative cost distribution out there. So these are some of the things that we had talked about in the past that we, that we had implemented in order to get that budget complete. Some staffing changes. So the biggest changes that we had in there is the removal of the CIO position, essentially a position elimination within the Department of Administration. And then we did a consolidation of our Transit Commissioner and our facilities and parks into one position, which is, which results in this kind of savings on those two, as two became one. We did do some lifting below those, below that position in order to take care of that, but it is some identified savings in, in consolidating those positions. So those are also reflected in this budget. All right, I did send an email with this presentation because I know you're not going to be able to read everything on this screen. So if you do check your email, there's a, there's a PDF with all of the slides on it if you need to zoom in. So this, this graph here is something we had put together in the past, and it, and it kind of shows kind of go over the different lines. So the gray line down on the bottom is what we would refer to as our limited levy. So that is the, the maximum amount we are allowed to levy based on state levy limits and, or how much we have levied over time. So this goes out to 2030, so there is some projection that's happening out into the future. The blue line is the debt service levy, so that is exempt from levy limits. So that is kind of above that, that level. So that's what gets us to the about $25 million levy is when you add those two together. So that's what that looks like with its increase based on net new construction over time and maintaining that about $5.2 million of debt service levy. That's why that, those two lines stay parallel over time is because we were maintaining that 5.2 million. So that's what those bottom two lines are. The yellow line, it's kind of a weird one in, in the fact that I divided it by 100, but it made the graphs overlay, overlay, so I did it that way. And so the yellow line is what our equalized value looks like over time. So the equalized value is on your tax bill, that would show up as the fair market value of your, of your property, right? It's different than the assessed value, right, Randy? So, but that is, that is essentially the number that we do all of our work off of. Here is the equalized value, which once again shows up as that fair market value. So that's what those property values in the county, that's how much they've been increasing over time. And then the line that's coming down with all of the numbers on it is our mill rate. So your mill rate is essentially how much we're levying compared to the equalized value of the county. So that's where we get that, that percentage, and that's why those two lines are going in those two different directions. So what we're seeing is property values increasing at a rate much greater than our levy is increasing. So that's what makes those lines do that. All right, debt review. So we've talked about this countlessly. So this is what our debt looks like. This includes our 2025 promissory notes. So we did borrow, I believe it was like right after the county board meeting last, last month, that was our borrow that had been approved in the previous budget. Just so everybody's aware, we got about a 2.9% rate, which is great. We originally planned to do it like two or three months earlier, and rates were at like 5 and 6%. So we held off and, and it, and it paid out in the end. So that was a really good number to see. But this is what it looks like. Just so we know, like every time we borrow, we're, we're just adjusting all of those numbers in order to make that debt service, that number on the far right over here is where we're targeting that 5.2 million. That's, that's the amount that we levy every year in order to pay back our debt. So that's the one that's going to have an implication on property taxes, is that number at the end. All right. I was having fun with this graph. So, so this thing kind of shows some of our, of our debt. So you can see the on the, on the right side there, the different borrows that we have done over time. And so what those green lines indicate there is the, you kind of, kind of look at the scale over there, is how much our debt service has been over time. Right? So we start over in 2021, and that number is right around 4.7 million dollars in, in debt service. And then this top line over here where it levels off is at 5.2. So that's that change in that debt service. The green line that's going down right there, so that is, call it like our debt service mill rate, right? So once again, that, that debt service is something that it goes on our property taxes. So if we compare how much you are paying in your property taxes in order to pay off the county's debt. So that's where that number has also is continuing to go down over time. So when you look at that, we are at in 2026, a mill rate of about 0.9. So what that means is for every $1,000 of property, of, of equalized value of your property, you're paying about 90 cents. I did some math for the $200,000 house is $180. So that's, so if you look at your tax bill, you can kind of figure out like how much of that is the debt that I'm paying. So that's really why we look at that mill rate. It helps us kind of identify, kind of put that into, into terms of what that looks like to the taxpayer. So once again, that downward trend is, is, is the right trend. So. I, I copied this idea from other counties that don't quite have the same downward trend, just so, so we're aware. All right, sales tax is another thing that kind of, we, we talk a lot about. I just wanted to share what that looks like over time. So we have, obviously following a lot of the same trajectory going forward. You can see this gray year, so that is 2024. We, we talked about this in the past. We had an anomaly in 2024. There was a, we got some sales tax in February of that year that were like three and four times what we had seen in the past, and so that just got us a little bit high. So we recognized that. We did some research on that, and we did budget accordingly. So even though this yellow line isn't going to go up to where the gray one was, we didn't expect it to, and it is on track for where we wanted it to go. So we will be watching that in the next year as we make those projections. If you're unaware, there were some changes to property taxes where electric bills are no longer subject to sales tax. So we don't expect too much change. It's, it's a pretty small amount overall of our, of our total tax bill, but something that we will be tracking over the next year as our sales tax figures come in. So this is all up to date through the end of September. All right, this is probably the most confusing, and I got some pretty confusing graphs, so, so just be ready for it. So the bottom line here, this blue line on the bottom is our net new construction. So we talk a lot about net new construction. Net new construction is the amount that we are allowed to raise our levy. So, so that's kind of that important thing as, as we talk about finding different ways or new ways to be, get revenue is through net new construction, which is the building of buildings. Okay? So what this yellow line shows is the change in equalized value year over year, right? So it isn't adding up. It's from one year to the next year. This is how much it went up. So it's kind of a, a different way of, of looking at it, but you can see that the property values kind of went up at a normal rate, and then something happened right here. And some of us called it COVID, but property taxes went, or not property taxes, property values just went up well, this is an 18% increase at the peak of, of that, right? So the total equalized value of all of the property in Dunn County went up 18% that year. So it's a pretty dramatic shift as you look at how property values are changing year to year, and how much that tax levy is changing year to year. So that's really what those two graphs are showing is the change in your property value versus the change in your levy, which is kind of maintaining a, a very small change over time. And I think what's important to me about that is to understand that the value of your house does not impact our levy, right? Net new construction. The blue line is what, what impacts how much we are able to levy. If your house doubles in value, that does not give us the ability to levy more money. Build a new house, it does. So. All right, this is the busy one. So those unexecutives saw this, but I just added a little bit of busy to show you the numbers there. So this is the changes in kind of those, the big three areas of our general revenues that we have. So when I talk about your general revenues, so that'd be our increase in our levy, sales tax, and state aid. So that's what the three different colors that you see there is. The blue is sales tax, the orange is, is net new construction, and the yellow is, is state aid. So you can see year to year where those different changes are happening. So each one of these bar graphs represents the top of that is how much new operational money we have as a county in order to use in that year. So as you look at 2023, we had just short of $1.2 million in new operational money to be able to, to use. We had about the same in 2024. And as we go down, we start to see a trend downward, and then we do have projections out to 2027 through 2030 there. And so that's, that's increasing sales tax by about five, or, or, or sales tax by about 5% and our state aid by about 5%. And using 1.5% net new construction, which is kind of on the high side, but, but falls right around where our normal net new construction is. So as we look at how much new operational money we're going to have year in and year out, that's kind of what we're looking at right there. That number falls right around 600,000 to like $650,000, right? So when we talk about salary increases or things like that, all of our salary increases have to come out of, out of that number. And then anything else new that we want to do within the county also has to come out of that without trying to find some additional revenue source. I said I was going to be positive, didn't I? But I did want to just kind of show you what that looks like over time. And you can see the fluctuations that have happened in the past. We don't know what sort of changes. You can see the big yellow bar right there, right? That was a change in state aid that happened that year. We had a, another large increase in yellow right there, and that was kind of the change between personal property tax and, and levy that had happened. So we have lots of little changes that happen over time. So, you know, any of these things could change at some point. We talk about the, the solar fields that may or may not ever happen, right? That would be an increase to state aid that could happen in the future. All right, major changes in the, in the budget. So this is really what we saw from last year to this year as being some of the major players in that. So obviously, these are round numbers, bringing everything to about the $50,000 range. So our levy went up by about 400,000, our state aid went up about 150, sales tax went up about 200,000. Our public charges went up by 950,000. A lot of that, this is countywide, so a lot of that is Medicaid in, in the neighbors or in human services. So that's where a lot of those changes is. When you look at public charges within the county, if you're looking at everything, Medicaid is, is one of the biggest players in that. And then there's a little change in the indirect revenues. So as we talk about that administrative cost changes are kind of reflected within this. And then finally, on the expense side, we had a salary and fringe increase of about 2.5 million overall. I can bring you back to that other one that showed us at $600,000. So it's a, it's a big number. And then we had about an additional $100,000 in operations, and then our highway construction budget between last year and this year went down by about 400,000. So. See, and there's other changes. There's the 10,000s here and other things like that that add up. These were just some of the bigger pieces to that, to that budget change. All right, overall revenues. I'm sure this is hard to see. This one is in your book. So you can kind of go through that. This is going to go through. So we've we have major funds, proprietary funds, and internal service funds. So we had shown some funds before, and so we had like our special revenue, so human services and highway and things like that. They do fall within that major fund or that major fund revenue area. The proprietary funds are the neighbors of Dunn County and transit. And then internal service funds that are down at the bottom is our workers' comp fund and our, and our healthcare fund, or so our health insurance. So that's kind of what those two are. So once again, if you really want to focus and dig into what's going on up there, the major fund areas where, where I would say you should spend your time looking, and we're, we're going to get a whole lot of graphs to, to kind of dig into that. So as we look into our major fund revenues, this is kind of that same thing from a pie chart standpoint. So where does the money for our major funds come from? So big piece of the pie right there in blue is property taxes. So as we talk about our major funds, that's where, where that's coming from, that's about $25 million. And then we can kind of go through the, the other blue over here is state grants. We have borrowing. We have some intergovernmental charges, public charges for service. So once again, this is those major funds. This does not include the neighbors of Dunn County Transit or, or Workers' Comp Fund or anything like that. All right. There it is. So I have a couple of slides here that are just kind of look at what that looks like down to the department to, and this isn't really at the department level. If you look over at the side over here, you'll see what, what those mean. So you see Public Works and Health and Human Services. So we use these titles within our audit. If you, if you have some spare time, want to read our audit, you'll see that these, these breakups of Public Works and Health and Human Services, these are areas that we are required to report on, and it's, the definition of those services is kind of standardized throughout all government accounting. So I like to put it together in this way, because this is something if you did want to look at another county or something like that to, to make comparisons, they have to use these same pieces in these same definitions. So it gives us a, an apples to apples comparison of, of items. So as we look at Public Works, which is Highway and Transit, you got about $4 million of, of tax levy, makes up just a little over a quarter of their entire budget comes from, from tax levy. The other side of it in red there is, is debt, right? So that's, that's a borrowing. So when you put those two together, pretty close to half of Highway is paid for by either property taxes or debt, which turns into property taxes in the end. So, and then they have other sources of revenue that they, that they use throughout in order to do that, that make up the rest. As you get into Health and Human Services. As you get into health and human services, you can see that their largest portion in this blue down here is, is state aid. So it's state revenues that they receive for the work that they do. The maroonish color is the tax levy. And then that orange down in the corner there is your public charges for service. So large proportion of their, uh, budget is also provided through other means other than, than tax levy. And now we get into public safety and government. So public safety, you can see kind of the list of departments that are included in that public safety. They're pretty much what you might think. Thank everybody that reports to judiciary and law committee and CJC. So, uh, that is a levy of about $12 million. So, um, I don't know if it's three quarters of the, of the total funding for public safety within the county comes from the tax levy. And then if we move down to general government, there's a few more categories that can come in there, but I didn't want to too many pie graphs for you. So, so I clumped the rest of them all together. But that also includes another about $12 million in levy and debt is included within this. So our debt service payment is included within that, that pie graph there. So this is, uh, you know, administration mainly, uh, registered, each treasurer, environmental services, libraries, extension and our debt service are included in that. So as you, as you look at those, you can kind of see that, you know, the big two departments that we talk about in, in the county, obviously like human services and highway being two of the bigger ones. And then as you come over here, a lot of that tax levy, a larger portion of that tax levy does go towards our public safety and then our general government operations. And here's another way to look at it. So this is a, a full pie graph of those, those same kind of areas. I told you there were some other little areas in there, but this is how the full, um, levy and general aid. Uh, so when I say that, that's the levy, our sales tax and our state aid all added up comes out to about 35 million when you put them all together. This is how that is distributed throughout the county and to those different areas. And now we move on to expenses. Again, this green chart is within that book. All of this information is in the book. Except for the pretty pie graphs. So you gotta, you gotta dig into the numbers yourself. So this also kind of has that same, uh, breakdown of those expenditure areas. And, and you can kind of see where the, uh, that the nursing home and transit are. All right. Expenses by category. Can you kind of see how that gets distributed out to, to the different areas? Oh, we only had one graph on that one. I was expecting another graph. So yeah, so you can see kind of where those expenditures. So as we look at that overall cost, this really tells you like which, which one of those areas is the, has the greatest amount of expense throughout the county. So where, where does our money go? Kind of look at that. So to save you the trouble of me kind of going through everything, I'm just gonna show you if you want to get more detail, how you can find that more detail on the budget in order to dig into everything into line items. So in your committees, you actually do see down to the line item. We do provide that. It is not a requirement to the statute, but we do, we do have that provided to you. So if you go out to our website and click on the, on the government drop down there and then click on financial and budgetary, that will bring you to a page where you can go. It's a listing of all of the different departments. You kind of got to read into the file names and you'll be able to figure out which ones that you want to. And as you go in there, I'm picking on you, Andrew, sorry. But, uh, so as you, as you open up each of those, they're gonna start off with a, an overall budget. So it's just gonna show you very similar to what you see in your committee meetings on a monthly report standpoint. This is the total expenses and this is the total revenues. So what we really look at, you know, the, the revenues have to match expenses. Everything's got to be balanced in order for, for this to work out. So this is on the top of everyone. It's very, it's all encompassing of the whole department. As you get into kind of the next page, or in the case of health and human services, the next 37 pages, you, uh, you'll, you'll see kind of a breakdown of these areas into what we refer to as cost centers. So that cost center is denoted in the upper left-hand corner is kind of a long number there. And so you, you kind of have to match the two. So all of the revenues for all of the cost centers ha, will be shown. And then after that, all of the expenses for all of the cost centers. So if you, if you look at a cost center and you look at some expenses, you want to see where that revenue comes from. You gotta scroll all the way to the top and look at the revenue for that cost center. So that's what that looks like. And that's kind of what I drew a circle around one cost center within the county clerk's budget. And then this is what it looks like on the expenditure side and that number down on the bottom will match in, in each of those. So that's what we look for as far as a balancing of the budget. But this is where you can get into all of those different line items. Last year's, last year's numbers are listed, this year's numbers are listed, and then the change that had occurred in between. And then finally, you can ask me questions now, but, um, I know there's a lot of information. You have the book. There's all of those files out there. If there's something as you're going through and digging into the budget that you have any questions, contact me. Happy to, to help walk you through all of that or explain why something changed one way or another. Sometimes there's things that we did different between this year and last year that lead to, uh, big changes that are easily explainable, but might catch your eye. Board, everybody.
Well, either you explained it perfectly or everyone has gone to sleep. I'm gonna vote for, you know, you explained it perfectly.
That's what I assume.
Yeah. All right. Seeing no questions. Uh, on to item nine, reports of departments, information technology.
All right. Information technology. Uh, we've gone through some pretty significant changes over the years. So I just kind of want to highlight how we're structured currently. On the left-hand side, we have Matt, Jeremy and Joe. Those three make up the help desk or the service desk team within the county. They typically deal with end user issues. If you call for support, they're typically the ones that you'll talk to. On the right-hand side, uh, we have Chris Billings and Randy Peterson. They are the systems engineers, um, and they deal with more of the networking, systems, background, infrastructure, more of the future planning for the department, keeping things, the lights on and keep everything, everything up to date and patched. Uh, I threw this slide in here. This is just a quick overview of the changes. Um, and I thought it was interesting. So back in 2021, we had, uh, an, a salary budget of 671,000. I have it down here. I don't why I keep looking over there. And then, um, in 2026, we have it budgeted at, uh, $504,000. So we went from a team of nine down to six. So I would love to claim that was all my, me, but, uh, Dan obviously helped us pave the way on that. Uh, something else that we started doing a couple of years ago was we started offering IT support services to some of the municipalities. We've onboarded both Sand Creek and, uh, the town of Grant, Grant. And part of the idea there was that a lot of them don't have great IT support services. And what happens is if there's someone, someone ends up using their personal Gmail account for a lot of the tax information or, um, even voting stuff. So what we found is if they come to us and they want to work and use an account on the county's tenant, meaning it's hosted by us, we just manage the account. If that person were to leave or unfortunately pass away, we have a way to be able to reset their information and get back into the account. So that's been a pretty good, working out pretty good. It's something we're gonna continue to try to offer and encourage municipalities to do. Obviously there's a little bit of revenue that comes back to the county when we do that. The third op, option here is the city of Menominee. That one's a little bit different. We're kind of working with Tom Hetzel, who's currently the city IT manager. And with that agreement, we're kind of acting as the tier one support. So all of the support quest, requests from the city are coming to the county employees and we're handing, handling them ourselves. And we work in, in tandem with Tom Hetzel to kind of dispatch and fix issues where we can. And that so far has been going pretty good. Uh, we make about $35,000 a year on that agreement. It's renewed annually. And, uh, it's been going pretty good. Um, the village of Colfax is another one that we're looking at doing. Uh, that'll be more of a managed solution, kind of like we did with the city. They're in kind of a weird position with a contract with the current company and we're looking at trying to see if we can either buy them out or come up with a different solution. This graph, um, I don't have near as many pie charts as Dan, so uh, this is my one and only. But, uh, what this shows is from our ticketing system, from October 1st of 2024 until October 5th of 2025, we had a total of 2,805, 20, uh, requests, 2,825, sorry. Uh, and what I wanted to highlight here is that in the blue, that is the portion of the city requests, um, that come through. That makes up about 18% of our total requests. And of that 527 requests, the county's only doing about 40 of them, 40% of those. We're working with Tom and that's one of the things that we're trying to accomplish is we want to try to get that number above 50% of tickets that we're completing for the city. Um, that'll help, you know, with the integration between us and the city. Uh, that's a total increase of about 9% of tickets from last year. Obviously a lot of that is due to the increased workload from the city. All right. So, uh, earlier this year, Chris Corpora had a, had everyone kind of work on what's called the COOCOG, uh, continuity of operations and continuity of government planning. And what the goal of this exercise is really just to get departments to think in the event of a ransomware attack, or if there's a power outage, or if there's a flood within that takes down both buildings, how can departments themselves think about operating without IT? Or without having technology? So part of this exercise and what we're doing is a part of this is just to make sure that we don't have any single points of failure within the county network. Our goal is to obviously just not have outages, keep things up and running as long as we can without, you know, without, with minimal impact. So what my point of my presentation today was just to kind of go over some of the redundancies that we have within the county and how we try to hold everything up. Okay. So on the left-hand side here, we have what's called the access layer. This is all the switches within the building. This is just a quick snapshot of what the government center looks like. Uh, we have three different floors there on the left-hand side. Each floor, essentially what I'm trying to show here is that each floor has two connections back to the main network room within the county. So on the access layer, what we connect here is think printers, computers, laptops, all of the end user devices that we call them. And what those connect back to is the core layer or the main network room of the building. The main thing that these connect to are the rest of the buildings within the county. The core layers are, so the judicial, the neighbors of Dunn County and the government center are set up in this kind of design and the single point of, point being that there's no single point of failure. We can keep things rolling, keep things going and keep things up and running. Okay. So. The batteries are dying maybe? Okay. Well. So that last slide had redundancy within the county building. Uh, this is just an example of the redundancy. We have outside of the county buildings as well. Since we host the CAD system, the computer aided dispatch for a lot of the remote agencies like Colfax, Elk Mound, UW Stout and the city of Menominee, it's important that even on the outside of our network, if we give a fiber cut or something that people are still able to connect, connect back to our network and access the computer, uh, systems. So, uh, looking here, we have a fiber path that goes west, goes down to UW Stout and goes up to Highway 94 and then continues going west. And we have a fiber path from the judicial bu, building going east, going down, kind of back over to Highway 94, then going east. And just this summer, there was a fiber cut down by the kind of pool that took down, luckily it didn't hit us, but it took down the school district and the, um, city's operation at the pool. So fiber cuts happen pretty often. They're not uncommon. And I think Dan was kind of telling us like, it's kind of risky, everything going downtown Menominee there. Good chance that things getting hot, or things getting hit. So we wanted to make sure that we had a different path going east. Uh, this is just a zoomed out picture of that same drawing. We have our path going west. That goes over to UW River Falls. So once it's hit, it's there, just goes to the internet and connects to the rest of the world. And that other red line is the path going east, connecting us back to Eau Claire. Okay. Uh, if you continue to follow that red line going east, it actually goes over to CBTC in Eau Claire. Now this isn't an internet connection per se. This is just us essentially stretching our county network out over to CBTC in Eau Claire. And inside of that, they have the RODC, which is the CBTC's regional data center. And inside of this data center, uh, we use up probably the top of one of those racks for our equipment. And the idea here is that we have all of our systems replicated out to here. So in the event of a power outage or if our buildings were to flood or some natural disaster takes both of our buildings down, we have a set of data and copy of everything out at the secured site. So uh, that's all I got. Any questions? All right.
Looks like you're off the hook. Sounds good. All right. Uh, land information.
Hello. Hi, I'm Rachel Wells. I'm the land information officer for Dunn County. Let's hope this works. Our team is a small team of three. Um, we're a division of the land, um, of the department of administration, formerly a part of IT. The team is comprised of myself. I'm the land information officer, GIS coordinator. Sarah Hanson, she's our real property lister, uh, and Brittany Ricky, she is our GIS specialist. So just a brief overview of the services that we do provide. It's kind of a wide variety, but they are all interrelated. We offer proper ma, property information management. Um, so that's truly managing a lot of information as it relates to properties within Dunn County. Uh, specific, you know, dimensions of those lots, the taxing jurisdictions that underlie with them and assessments, um, and additional details. We also collaborate with municipal assessors on the property assessment process. That's a large part of what our real property lister does is collaborate with those municipal assessors to receive those updated assessment valuations back, which facilitates the tax process. Geographic information systems is a, a broad service that's, uh, provided by our team, primarily from myself and the GIS specialist. The biggest portion of what we do there is maintain some foundational data sets that, um, for mapping purposes of county features, boundaries, districts, things like that. And that gets used for a variety of other services. Uh, we handle rural addressing within the county, but then we also do coordinate with the other addressing jurisdictions within the county. So the villages and the city to ensure that we're getting all of those changes and putting them into the appropriate systems, the property information system, the GIS system and the emergency management system. So there's a lot of coordination and stuff that happens with them as well. And then the last portion is we facilitate the land information program within Dunn County. So the county does receive, uh, funding in the form of grants and is able to retain some fees to help support some of these services that I just mentioned, but also to help support projects that aren't aligned with the county's plan that other departments have. So it's a way to kind of push that technology and that information forward to make it more accessible for people and have data-driven solutions. So I'm gonna highlight the GIS portion of our team. So GIS has been within the county since 2006. That was our, our first GIS person. It wasn't its own division at the time. It was a part of That was our first GIS person. It wasn't its own division at the time. It was a part of AT, but it's been a part of the county since 2006. So this is a snapshot of what we offer. The biggest thing of what our team does is we are actively every day modifying mapping geospatial data sets that are kind of essential to running some things in the background, some services for the, in the background. So if, when we're talking about things, some dynamic data sets that we're updating every day. Properties, property addresses, transportation networks and the address ranges along them. Emergency response areas, whenever there's changes in fire, med, law, response, those are things that we are updating. We're updating municipal boundaries as a result of annexations, changes in tax districts. All of those things, all of those data layers that we're maintaining then go on to be available to the public. They also go within our CAD system for dispatching. And so that's a bulk of what we're doing a lot day to day. We also make sure that some static reference layers are getting acquired regularly. So aerial imagery to support emergency land use conservation efforts. We're making sure that we're getting high resolution imagery on a regular basis to support those things. And that brings a lot of efficiencies to our departments too, and is an active resource to the public on our GIS site. And we also do capture elevation data at a county-wide scale on a, on a 10-year basis to help support those efforts too. We'll also do analysis for departments and custom data development that's in alignment with what the county is looking for and also statewide initiatives. Landowners can also come into our office and they often do, or people who are like servicing them and will look at their property. We're not land surveyors. We do not claim to be, but we will help to go through their documents, help them understand their property boundaries and see if the representation that we have of the property is the best it can be with the information we have. So aside from data, we provide a lot of resources. So I kind of mentioned the GIS site. That's our biggest resource. It is relied upon by so many individuals. So landowners, service providers, telcos, it does hit a lot of people. And I have a slide next to kind of show you the kind of traffic that it gets. We also have some kind of more fun recreational applications that are public-facing. But we will also develop some internal applications for departments to help kind of create some efficiency in some of their workflows with these data solutions. And then we'll also help build field applications that kind of go on to help capture more precise, better information more efficiently. So those are some bigger initiatives that have been identified in the land information plan. So that's where we really kind of help support. We'll also provide training resources with big technology shifts. We have a big one that's happening next year. And we make sure that we are providing information in a standardized way and meeting the state statute requirements because a lot of the data that we do maintain has to be maintained to a certain standard and has to be available in a certain way for everybody so that you can go to any county in Wisconsin and have the same amount of information, baseline of information. And so here's kind of, I talked about that online resource. So the big one that we have is Beacon. And what it does is it integrates the data that we do maintain with the information that's in the property information system. So ownership changes, right? So document gets recorded at the register of deeds. Our team then reviews that deed, changes the ownership and modifies that property if they're reconfiguring it, they're dividing it, they're changing how they're owning it. So that information ties in with the GIS site and that's updated nightly. So here's just a snippet. So from the start of the year to the 12th, there have been a total of 1.3 million requests for information. So those are people doing searches, trying to find information. On average, there are 4,800 requests per day and total visits to dates, so just going to the site and perusing, over 82,000. So an average of 288 visits per day. So that's already trending to surpass where we were at this time last year. So it's kind of become a resource that's really relied upon. So, so why does this matter? So it helps make information accessible to anyone who needs it, right? It's a, it's a resource that we do make publicly available. And it's an authoritative resource. There's a lot of data brokers and providers out there. But you know, when you come to our resources, that this is something that's real. It's, it drives the foundation for the property and taxation and assessment process. It ensures municipal boundaries are correctly represented and being reported and relayed to state and federal agencies. That then helps drive things like the election process. It facilitates the routing of emergency calls and supports emergency response. There's actually been a huge transition throughout the state of Wisconsin over the course of the past three years to lean heavily on GIS data for the actual call routing of emergency calls. So all of that information is what the state is moving to. And it supports mitigation, planning efforts, land use, conservation, a wide variety of things. So it's a, it's a really all-encompassing resource that the work that we do supports more things than we even know. And so just I'll briefly touch on this. So funding. So we do receive funding from the state of Wisconsin. It's a reliable annual source of revenue. It's in the form of grants. We apply for them every year. It is kind of reflective of the real estate markets. So these graphs kind of show the funding that we have had over the years. And so while reliable, it does fluctuate quite a bit because it is really dependent on what the real estate market is doing. And that's not just like property sales, which we, we know have slumped quite a bit. It has to do with refinances, right? Interest rates are high. People are not refinancing. And whenever those refinances, those transactions happen, there's a fee that is recorded or that is collected by recording those documents and that helps drive this program. So it's been a little goofy the past few years, so. And similarly, we're able to retain some fees at the county specifically for these efforts that are identified as either statewide initiatives or ones within the land information plan for the county. And so because of how heavily these services have been relied upon, and not just GIS, land information generally, there have been some really concerted efforts to increase funding to the program. And there's actually an active Senate bill right now, 218, that is a joint effort with the Register of Deeds Office, the Realtors Association and the Wisconsin Land Information to help increase funding to that program by actually reducing the fee to the landowner, which sounds counterintuitive, but it has to do with the distribution of how much money goes to the state and how much money the county actually gets to retain. So, yeah, because it's relied upon, it actually, there's some, some efforts to increase it. That's all I got. So if you have any questions, I'm here for it.
We have several this time. Supervisor Barrier.
This might be kind of ridiculous, but I was wondering, like, I was surprised to see that you're housed in the Department of Administration and not Environmental Services because there's like a lot of overlap with planning and zoning survey. So I was just wondering, like, what's the historical reason for that?
Why, right?
Yeah.
So I think that the historical reason for being within administration is because it's truly a service that they want it to be distributed to all county, or I'm sorry, to all departments within the county and not just, you know, just one specific department. For example, the funding that we can receive through the state can fund projects that are for the Register of Deeds Office and they, you know, report to the same committee, but they're not necessarily within environmental services. It also allows us to support public health initiatives, you know, things that are within highway. They're all land information related, so it's viewed more as a, like a county service versus specific to environmental services. But yes, by and large, the people that we work with the most are within the environmental services because they're so land resource-heavy and a very technical industry. So, yeah. But it's a collaborative effort too. We have a work group to make sure that this, the funding that we do receive and the time and effort is being distributed in a way that is acceptable by the departments.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
For sure.
Thank you Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Headland.
Thank you. Voice will just added some lots and put in a new street. Is that work all done already? Are you?
So we have processed the lots. We haven't, they did do a street extension, so we definitely do have that and the new address points that they have assigned to those lots. So I believe that we have already incorporated that data and it's on the GIS site for about maybe a month or so. We worked with the PD department there to have that.
Supervisor Headland, anyone else? Looks like you're off the hook. Thanks for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Facilities. And being he's facilities, he's of course installing them himself.
Hello. This will be a little bit quicker than my 40-minute presentation in January. I was allotted five minutes tonight. So anything that I don't touch on of facilities, which is a lot of it, I'm focusing on one small part of it, focused on a little bit more in the packet. And I'm here for any questions after this on any other parts of facilities as well as my door is always open and love to, love to talk. So I've been in facilities about 100 days, so there's so much that this group has taught me so far and great, amazing group of people that I've come onto the team with. And it's been a great 100 days and I wondered when I first started where I could make an impact and help out from the beginning. And that first week that I started, I wanted to visit a park once a week, take some culvers, go out to a park. And we have 12 plus in Dunn County that are ours, most of them on water. And so I started going to these parks on my lunch. And I started seeing a lot of not the best shape of pavilions, picnic tables, overgrownness. And it's made me want to see what we could do now without going overboard, without putting other stuff on the back burner, but make an impact with these, with these parks. So we put an initiative together on a monthly park renovation called the Park Power Up that on the last Tuesday of every month, our whole team from facilities, including custodial, including office staff would go out to one park a month and do what we could to get it back in shape. That first month, we went up to Champney. It needed a lot of work and it was close by and the park down the road was the Russian Slough and about a mile away. So that was our first one in August. And then our second was Pine View last month, still needs some stuff. And then Lake Menomen Park a few days ago was slotted to be on the Day of Caring that our facilities group helped with. So that was the next one on the list in late October if we had decent weather. And so I'll go through just a few pictures from each of these parks. Both of these sets of pictures for before and after are from Champney Park. We did 15 picnic tables, two pavilions, the pavilion on the left. In that top left picture, you can't even see the lake. And in the bottom picture, it, it just a total transformation on that. It wasn't even getting used on, on that area of the park because it was shaded, it was overgrown with moss, everything else. So most of these things, our hours are allocated for the group for the year. It's just a matter of where you put your priorities and your time. So renovating and fixing these parks up, a few gallons of paint, a few two-by-eights and just our time. And most of these facilities, techs, workers, custodial staff have never seen most of these parks unless they're the few facilities guys that work out of this building. They're the main ones that go to these parks on a weekly, monthly basis for fixes, but some of the ones over at Judicial or the neighbors, they don't get out to them. And that's where this monthly renovation really shines too. Then I grill out for everybody at these parks. So left side, my goal is to find on Facebook Marketplace some of these swing sets that people give away for free and get one of them at every park because out of all of our parks, I think Champney is the only one with a kid's swing set. So then the left or the right side is the Russian Slough. Many of you might not have ever been there or know much about it. It's right on the mouth of Tainer Lake, on the Red Cedar River. It's beautiful, a lot of duck hunting up there. And it was overgrown, concrete picnic tables in the weeds, broken. You couldn't see, that top picture is even after we went through with an offset mower. So before that, you couldn't see anything of where that truck was. So few loads of black dirt, a lot of weed, tremendous. It's, it's beautiful and more to come on that next spring with things, but a little work goes a long way. And then Pine View Park, this was last month. This is one of the heaviest-used parks of Dunn County. This is down on Lake Ogali, one of the cleanest lakes in the county, I would say. And it gets as much traffic as anywhere and it's one of the only parks of Dunn County that has electricity. So our goal is eventually to maybe allow camping at some of these parks that have the space for it. Maybe they can rent out a pavilion for a Saturday afternoon for their grad party, stuff like that. So getting them in shape enough so people want to use them is part of the goal as well. So both of these pavilions are at Champney or at Pine View Park, both of them have power ran to them. And then this was by the lake. It was about four to six feet overgrown of the parking lot itself. I didn't know wooden bollards were there till I walked about a foot away from them. So great progress there. And there was, at one point, there was grills, you know, park grills out there at the park with a concrete base on them. They were all rusted out sitting next to the pole. So we have grills coming or we have them here. They'll be installed in the spring so they don't have to sit through the the winter out there, but they're ready to go. Awesome stuff. I really suggest you go down there and, and make an afternoon of it, have lunch there. 28 stumps we ground down, we reseeded, we'll overseed again in the spring and just a lot, lot done. This was featured in News 18 a week and a half or so ago, as well as the Chipper Herald. And then I've got a hot link to this video I made up of our work that day too. So reach out if you'd like a copy of that. We can get it emailed to you. And then Lake Menomen Park. So this is a half mile down the road from here. Hundred and some acres of woods, bike trails, everything. And this was the next on the list, the end of October, but a few, I put our subject of a need in the ring for the Day of Caring and it got picked to do. So I think a lot of the 3M employees, as well as our staff came to Lake Menomen Park that day and took care of the picnic tables, took care of the pavilion getting repainted. And then at the same time, our facilities guys didn't, about a week ago, none of them knew that this set of stairs on the left was even there. I don't know if the bike group that maintains the bike trails was to mow this or if it was on us. But I just asked if we could get that cleaned up at the same time that we were there helping facilitate that. And then a bunch more concrete. there, helping facilitate that. And then a bunch more concrete or wooden bollards in the middle pictures that most didn't know existed. And so much real estate gained back for that park. And then, just another before and after on the right side, but huge transformation. Everybody that helped out there got there at 8:00 and wrapped up by, wrapped up by noon. So, huge transformation with a group of about 10 of us, 12 of us that go to the parks once a month. It's been a great thing, something that we can make an impact right away on. A few hundred dollars in paint, a few hundred dollars in supplies, and taking some of these areas of facilities that have been on, maybe the back burner don't get as much attention, getting them back on track. And with 12-plus parks, even hitting one a month in the good months of the year, gets a deep dive into these once every one to one and a half years, depending on what each one needs. But if we get these maintained to a certain level, then we can deep dive into some other projects at these parks in future years when it maybe doesn't need a coat of paint. We can do something else there, maybe put on a playground set, that sort of thing. So, definitely more to come in other areas of facilities, definitely on the HVAC stuff next year. But, a big part of facilities that I wanted to touch on today that you might not have known about were the parks.
Got a couple of questions for you, Austin. Supervisor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Austin, would you ever welcome volunteers that, to come and work with you on these days?
Great question. And absolutely. Dan has brought up other, if other departments wanted to make a half-day out of this too, or different nonprofits.
Right.
Like the Day of Caring United Way Group, Red Cedar Racing.
Well, that's, that's where, that's exactly where, that's exactly where I was headed with it, that, you know, if you, if there's a, I'm guessing it's on your, or you could put it on your website if it's not there already, when you're going to have these workdays. And yeah, I'd sure like to, that's not only the racing, but some other groups that I'm associated with that like to get out and do community volunteer work. So, yeah, maybe make it known where that site would be when you're going to have a workday or kind of what, what tools to bring along or whatever. I'm guessing shovels and paintbrushes and ladders and stuff, but brakes. But, anyway, yeah.
Definitely the stout football team before practice starts will.
It'd be a great thing for them to do.
Absolutely. So, we're looking at really improving, finding, finding these parks on the Dunn County website, getting pictures up of what each park can house, pavilion size, group size, does it have electricity, can you rent it out, could you tent camp at this one, that sort of thing. So, a lot of good things to come with that. And we definitely can get the word out to countywide or even just on the main county website of an upcoming one. And if you think about the last Tuesday of the month, hopefully in good weather, we're doing something somewhere. Then the second Tuesday of the month, we'll have a monthly meeting, and that's been working pretty well.
Thank you, Supervisor Thomas, both for the question and the volunteering offer. We're always happy to hear those. Supervisor Story?
Yes, Austin, when I first started on county board, probably back in 2003 or 19 years ago, I was on facilities, and I was on facilities for a number of years. We'd always do as a group a park tour and pictures. And, and so it was really great seeing those. And my favorite park was, is the Russian Slough. I haven't been there in a long time. I know there's kayaking and stuff there as well, but also good fishing. So, that was really good to see. And I guess I just wanted to ask a question about the Lake Monoman Park and the prairie, because that was one of the things that we talked about quite a bit is, is how you would deal with the prairies and burning down this area or that area, what your plans are with regards to the prairie.
I do not have a plan with the prairie side of things yet. Are you talking up by the road or down kind of by the lake?
Yeah.
By the lake, okay. Because I've walked, I've walked every trail of that, so I'm happy to say that so far. And I know where you're talking down there.
Good habitat.
Yeah. So, I can get back to you on that.
Just, just an FYI, something I was just wondering about. And what they said about you is true. You're amazing.
Thank you, Supervisor Story. Austin, you might touch base with some folks in the Biology Department at Stout on, on the prairie stuff, because they have some folks there who are very aware of that and would be happy to consult.
Thank you.
And with that, we have no more questions. So, this is your chance to run for the hills. Thank you. All right. Corp Counsel?
Hang on. There we go.
Testing?
Yep.
Got it. Where'd the clicker go, Austin?
Got it. Sure works.
Got it, okay. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Jim McMenamy. I wanted to talk about, I'm talking about one subject, but I'm talking about many, so I'm going to go a little fast because I was told there's some time constrictions as well. I realize that a lot of folks, unless you hang out at the courthouse or you've had dealings with me directly, may not know or may not see what our department does, the Corporation Council Department. So, I kind of wanted to do an overview on the ways we provide support for the county board, for the other departments, et cetera, and what we do in court as well. You know, we don't have a direct public service counter. We're not like highway where you see us on the roads working, but we do do quite a bit of business kind of behind the scenes. I like to think of us as an internal service department for the county operations, and we ensure compliance with state and federal law. I believe our impact across the county is felt every day. And of course, our goal is to help Dunn County government operate efficiently, effectively, ethically, and legally. Whoops. Jeez, I really went far. There we are. There we are. Okay. For those that have been around for a while, Barb is one of our corporation councils for, I believe, 15 years. She does a great job in court. She's a bundle of knowledge when it comes to all sorts of litigation and other matters. Our newest member's April, she's been with us since springtime of this year. However, in her previous position, she did litigate on a regular basis and handle municipality matters. So, she has a lot of past knowledge and experience. And Beth, our administrative assistant, has been around since 1997, so 28 years at this point. So, we've got, we've got a lot of experience both, both with the county and prior to the county experience. Now, some of the services we provide for the county departments, legal representation and advice, we provide legal guidance to departments, committees, elected officials, but we assist in interpreting statutes, administrative codes, county policies and ordinances, and we represent the county in civil matters and administrative proceedings that are not being covered by, by outside counsel through our insurance company. Risk management, we help identify and mitigate legal risks, work proactively to prevent litigation and liability exposure, and we collaborate with the insurance company. When there is an insurance claim, we work with them collaboratively to assist in handling the matter. In terms of claims, those not covered by insurance, review and respond to legal claims. If they are being covered by the insurance company, we manage pre-litigation process and coordinate responses with departments. That includes discovery requests. We work with them on those. And we try to ensure compliance with any statutory claim guidelines. Ordinance enforcement, this is multi with zoning, but we're there to support departments enforcing any, any department enforcing county ordinances. We file legal actions when voluntary compliance is not achieved, and we work with zoning on enforcing enforcement strategies, excuse me. And then lastly, open records and meetings. We advise departments about the Wisconsin open government, government laws. We assist in responding to public records requests and ensure compliance with opening meeting requirements. One of my goals for this coming next 12 months and hopefully more like next three months is to come out with a new ordinance regarding records requests and record retention and a policy and internal, internal policy so departments can better comply with those. Other services we provide internally to the county departments, content review and drafting. We draft and review contracts, resolutions, ordinances, really anything, even letters, as simple as that, just to make sure we don't step on our own toes, ensure legal sufficiency and clarity with county documents, and help departments avoid unintended legal consequences. I'm going to pause here because that's probably, probably been the biggest surprise for me in this position, is how many contracts the county signs. And in some cases, if they're a 30, 40, 50-year contract, how it may affect many, many future boards. So, I'm really concerned with that, and it's something that I did in my past. So, I'm pretty, I think I'm pretty good at doing it. So, I've been focusing a lot of my personal attention on that. Policy and procedure development, in particular with Jenna, quite frankly, they were kind of a lot of policies as it relates to human resources matters. And I've been helping her with those and assisting and making sure we don't, in that case, step on our toes as well and violate some laws. Employment and labor law support, I have a lot of experience of that in the past. So, I help and assist in advising on hiring discipline and termination practices, help provide support if there's an investigation going on, and help ensure compliance with the laws, the FMLA, the ADA, the EEOC. I do have another ordinance that, that I'm working on that because of concerns I have with ADA compliance, quite frankly, that you'll be seeing in the coming, you know, probably months. And regulatory and enforcement guidance, interpret and apply state and federal regulations, help departments navigate complex compliance requirements, and provide strategies for effective and lawful enforcement actions. And lastly, in terms of litigation, one, we represent, sorry, getting rid of my turn list. We represent the county in all sorts of legal proceedings. In particular, we handle all child support, guardianship and protective placements, mental health commitments, in-rem property proceedings, which I have a slide at the very, I'm going to talk a little bit about in-rem, but that is tax foreclosures basically. And then any bankruptcy matters. If a debtor to the county files for bankruptcy, there, there are certain rights we have to potentially collect at least part of, if not all of it. And then, I try to support the county board and the county committees. Doing so, provide legal counsel guidance, provide legal guided advice to county board supervisors and committees, and that can be an entire committee, that could be a member of the committee, ensure decisions and actions comply with applicable laws and county authority, and assist with interpretation of state statutes, county ordinances, board rules. Ordinance resolution drafting, that's kind of self-evident, but you know, I have drafted several, a couple of ordinance releases, and I certainly review all ordinances and resolutions that come before you. Meeting support, advise an open meeting law, include agenda preparation in closed sessions, attend meetings when legal counsel is required, and help to ensure transparency and accountability in government proceedings. And I'll say, if, I try to monitor all the agendas for the county committee meetings, but if you ever need me, if you have something on a legal concern, I might miss it, please let me know. Send me an email. If I am not available, one of my folks will be. And then training and education when it's needed. And certainly there is a support. If you just have a question as to how a statute works or, or the meaning of it, absolutely, I can, I can work out a memo and get it to you guys. I can come present to, to a committee on a subject. Here's some highlights. This is all my staff report, so I'm not going to sit here reading the law. I'm probably proud as to the, the rules of the board. That was a lot of work. It was quite time-consuming. I did help Jenna with the human resources code. The other ones are ones I've been working on in coordination with the various departments. And then you have the 2024 full-year numbers for some of the court matters we handled, which those include a lot of preparation time too. So, it's not just going to court for half an hour and there's one, there's two. It's hours of preparation time prior to those hearings. Now, I want to talk about in-rem, because it came up in the last meeting when a really good question was asked about it. Why are we owed so much money from 2023? Which was a good question. That does seem odd. And I'm going to give a timeline here. Let's pretend that in 2021, I was a property owner in Dunn County and I just decided I didn't want to pay taxes anymore. Well, I'd be delinquent in January 31st of 2022 for my 2021 property taxes, because we have a system where you can pay half and half in August. And those aren't exact dates, approximate dates, by the way. A tax certificate is issued for each delinquent parcel, and there begins a two-year required wait before an in-rem foreclosure action can start. Wisconsin Statute 75, 5213A specifically prevents Wisconsin counties from taking action for two years. So, now we're in 2024, then we send out a notice to them that, to, to the property owner and to any lien holders. If it is a secured debt, we notify the bank. The bank's the most common one, obviously. They have a mortgage frequently. And I picked October 15th, by the way, because that's today, and that's, we filed it today. So, I picked that date. I lose the year, the date on here is a year ago. But then, once, once the notice is sent out, there's an eight-week response period, minimum eight-week response period, because we need to make sure we have service in the person. And some people who don't pay their property taxes, we don't have a current address for them, and we need to find them. That's why after that, the dates get a little bit softer. Usually, we affect service within a month, and so month, two months, so sometime from December of 24 through February or even March 25, we can start the, we can foreclose if they don't have, if they don't respond, which is the most common thing. And along the way, certainly the, the taxpayer, the tax, or the, you know, the taxpayer can certainly offer to pay for their taxes in full and back taxes and fines and penalties. And if attorneys are involved, attorney's fees as well. So, that's fully collected before the foreclosure is final. And then usually that, they do the summer of 2025, we'd be trying to sell the property. That is all I have. If you have any questions, I'll answer them the best I can. And I also, my two folks in the back of the room who might have to help me.
Supervisor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listening to your report, it's like, how many of you are there? And do you sleep? No, it's, it's amazing how much, how much action you must be involved in. I mean, I can't, it, just trying to keep up there is like.
It can be.
So seriously, do you ever sleep?
I do sleep. I don't know if Barb and April do, but I get plenty of sleep. Nah, I'm kidding about that. No, it, it varies too. I mean, I'll go a week and not get a contract, and the next week I'll have five or six contracts, 20, 30, 40 pages or longer, that I, for the most part, I'm sure Barbara, April maybe remember one contract I sent up. I try to review all the contracts. So, there are weeks where that part of the job is pretty quiet, and then the very next week, we get bashed with them. And I, for years, I've seen the effects of signing a bad contract, and I do not like that. Obviously, some companies, if you're trying to sign, sign a contract with a large corporation, they're not going to bend very much on their terms. So, it ended being, here are my concerns, but it's take it or leave it. You know, is it worth the risk with these, you know, with these bad provisions? With a smaller company or with an individual, you usually have pretty good negotiating power with them where you can get provisions, provisions changed. For the ERP project, I was able to get both companies to make major concessions on the language, which again, it may never come to fruition, but if we have it to speed with them, it's, I was able to get some pretty good provisions in those contracts.
It looks like that's it. Thank you very much. All right. Item 10, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances to the county board from the standing, from the executive committee. Item A, ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section 5, Section V of Dunn County ordinances, fund balance policy, second reading. This item is already on the floor. There was a motion in a second with the first reading. Does anyone have any clarifying questions as a start? Okay, seeing none. Speaking to the Supervisor Bashant?
I would like to move to amend the proposed amendment to Chapter 7, Section 5, based on the version provided to all members in September with a modification in 7.5.3, changing it from committee and administration to executive committee.
And I would need a second for that. Supervisor Morehouse, seconds? Does anyone have any clarifying questions on the amendment? Okay. Back to, we, so Supervisor Burnt is your question for the amendment, or is it for the, for the bigger piece? Because, okay, so we'll do the amendment first. So, no questions on the amendment to the amendment? First call for debate on the amendment. All right. Second call for the debate on the amendment. Great. Seeing none, we are going to move to a vote. An "I" vote, adopt Supervisor Bashant's amendment to the amendment, which we will then go on to vote on. All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes, the amendment to the amendment is adopted. We'll now move on to the amendment more broadly. Any, any, okay, so now that it's been amended, we've had a first call, right, first call for debate Supervisor Burnt.
Thank you Chairman. After having gone through these changes, I feel that this removes any sort of codified budget and fiscal policies that we currently have, which is made it public to the, is made available to the public in our code of ordinances. But it will also put our fiscal policies at the hands of the county manager. Yes, we still need to finalize and approve this year's budget, and we'll need to clear a committee first before that. We decide in November. But I feel like, even if nothing has changed from the last budget in this new policy, or from this, I guess what our last policy was, or the ordinance was, to this new policy that we would be adopting. I feel that, sorry. That it will only add more unnecessary steps to an already complicated process. Additionally, this opens the door for the county manager to further add unnecessary steps on a regular basis that will only make budget planning more complicated in the future. I feel that if we want to see change and modernization of our budget planning, we should look at restructuring our current budget planning ordinance that serves as, to serve as a basis that would be followed as a set of guidelines in the future, instead of developing.
So this, this is the amendment on, just on the fund balance policy? So it's not really broadly germane to the bigger budget process? It's only germane to those departments which carry a fund balance? And it's moving, essentially moving the, moving the, the larger countywide one from ordinance to policy, and then giving us a space to create policy around all the other fund balances, so. And that would have, and that's all stuff that will have to be approved as well by the the appropriate committee board. But it, this actually should simplify the budget process some, but. So I just, I wanted to, I want to make sure that we, you're addressing the, the sort of the central matter. So go ahead.
Yep. I guess kind of refactoring that, and. Actually, I'll just yield both, yep.
All right, any others speaking to the amendment to the fund balance, the ordinance for the fund balance policy? All right, seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. B, approval of fund balance and networking capital policy. And this is a resolution, so I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bashant moves. Supervisor Hagan, seconds. Any clarifying questions on this? All right, seeing, oh Supervisor Bashant.
Just, I would like to move to amend this, if this is the time.
Yes.
Okay, I move to amend the proposed fund balance policy to replace the Committee on Administration under the required approvals with the Executive Committee.
I would need a second. Supervisor Morehouse, seconds. Supervisor Bashant, just so that clarified for people, this is to get both pieces to have the same committee as, as the reporting committee. Everybody clear on the amendment? First call for debate on the amendment. Second call for debate on the amendment. Yes. But thank you. We do have the, thanks for checking, we have missed that occasionally. Right, all right, second call for debate on the amendment, didn't see any, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. 11C, 2025 budget amendment. Oh, sorry, right, no, that was just the amendment to the. Thank you Andrew. Now on the, now a vote on the amended policy, are there any clarifying questions on that? All right. Does anyone have anything to say, first call? Second? Right, now. Item B, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, moving now to item C. It's the amendments, man, they trip me up. All right, this is a budget amendment. You've all seen a number of these at this point, money comes in, money goes out, we have to account for it. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Story moves, Supervisor Hagan, seconds. This is a roll call vote. So Andrew is setting that up right now. Does anyone have any clarifying questions? All right, any debate going once? Any debate going twice? All right, now we can move on to voting. The TV behind us does not appear to be working, oh, but you all seem to be working very quickly. If you haven't tapped your screen to be able to initiate your vote, the, does not appear there are any supervisors online. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Yeah, it's, yours, yours, it's definitely not you, it's definitely your device. Okay, motion passed. Supervisor Story, did you have a, have something that I missed? All right. 11, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances come to the County Board from the standing committees. A, Planning Resources and Development, one, ordinance amendment, Rezone, Hatch's LLC, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Quinn moves, Supervisor Wolf, seconds. Does anyone have any clarifying questions on the Rezone? All right, first call for debate. Second call for debate. Seeing none, we will move to a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Second for Planning Resource and Development, Resolution authorizing application for surface water grants from the Department of Natural Resources, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Headland, seconds. Are there any clarifying questions? And any call, any debate going once? Going twice? All right, now speaking to the resolution, we will now move on to a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. 11B, Committee on Administration, Resolution adopting the 2026 pay plan and wage structures, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Wolf moves, Supervisor Headland, seconds. Are there any clarifying questions? All right, any speaking to the resolution going once? Second call for debate. Seeing none, all in favor? Motion, oh, sorry, any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution adopting the 2026 health and dental premiums. B2, I need a motion in a second, Supervisor Bashant moves. Supervisor Bauer, seconds. Are there any clarifying questions? Any speaking to the resolution? Second opportunity for debate. All right, seeing none, we can move on to the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Judiciary in Law, ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section VI, Dunn County ordinances, fee 7.6.01, Sheriff's Office, second reading. This is on the floor from its first reading. Are there any clarifying questions? All right, any speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Burnt, yours will be the next, for the next piece. Second call for debate. Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Judiciary in Law 2, ordinance amending Chapter 26 Maintenance and Board of Prisoners, this is second reading, again, it's already on the floor. Are there any clarifying questions? Seeing none, speaking to the resolution, Supervisor Burnt.
Thank you Chairman. Seeing as the, what has been proposed to us removes any sort of, I guess, oversight from, I guess, any part of the government, I would like to make a motion to amend. Sorry, to amend Section 2606 to read as follows. Accounting boarding, accounting boarding its prisoners at the jail shall pay the sum of $60 per day. For each such prisoner, the sheriff and the county manager may agree to enter into a contract which deviates from the regularly established daily rate above. In the event that the sheriff and county manager deviate from the daily rate established above, they shall report such to the next judiciary in law committee meeting.
Do I have a second for that motion, Supervisor Bashant, seconds? All right, does anyone have any clarifying questions on the amendment? Either for us or through me for Supervisor Burnt? Supervisor Willsey.
How is this different from the original one?
Essentially, it adds a reporting component, so right now, the, the, right now, the, the change as it stands would allow, change to the contract essentially at the county manager's discretion, county manager and sheriff's discretion. This would still allow that, but then that, the, the change to that contract would be reported back to judiciary in law.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reporting requirement. Any other clarifying questions? All right. Seeing none, first call for debate on the amendment to the proposed ordinance change. Second call for debate on that? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The amendment to the ordinance change passes, now we move on to the ordinance change. Any clarifying questions on the changed ordinance as amended? All right, seeing none, any debate? Second call for debate. Seeing none, we are prepared to vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. That ends the ordinance and resolution section of our program for the evening. Announcements, our next meeting will be November 12th. It's important to remember that this is a little bit out of our normal sequence, normally we would go with the Tuesday after. But we have a holiday that gets in the way. It's, but it's still the second Wednesday, so not the third Wednesday, which a number of us over the years have not been as on top of as they might want to have been. Having been 20 minutes late for that meeting once, I, I have a certain amount of sympathy for that, so I'm, I'm big on the reminder. All right, any other announcements?
I'd need to see Supervisors Headland, Quinn, and Willsey for your signatures, please.
All right, that's it, we are adjourned.